...Perkins, Zguski. Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Jacobs. Councilman Grover.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedano.
Here.
Councilman Baumann.
Here.
Councilman Mazza.
Here.
President, please.
Here. This is a regular conference of the City Council as incorporated in the annual meetings notice of 2012, which was filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2011, and sent to the Star Ledger and Home News Tribute in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. I will now open the public speaking portion of the meeting. Any taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time. Once again, I will now open the public speaking portion of the meeting. Any taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council, you may do so at this time.
I don't know what's going on. This, uh, my name is not changed. Uh, I don't know what's going on with, uh, drinking trough.
Okay, thank you. Any other taxpayer resident wishing to address City Council? Seeing none, I close the public speaking portion of the meeting, and we will move on to new business.
Letter dated October 11, 2012 from Business Administrator requesting permission for the purchasing agent to make the necessary arrangements to auction and pound a property in possession of the Elizabeth Police Department to be held by propertyroom.com, state-reapproved online auction site. Date of sale will be set by the auction company and will be published in the Newark Star Ledger contingent upon City Council's approval.
Any comments? Just, yeah, confidently.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, that I know this doesn't, it's not reflected on the city's website. I think it would be interesting just to let the public know that this is available. I know it's on the propertyroom.com. Maybe if it could be said somewhere in the city website that those items are, you know, up for auction in case anyone is interested. That's it. Thank you.
I don't know the other things you mean of the auction.
Well, yeah, just pretty much the overall information. I know it's published on the newspapers, but just something stated on the regular city website. Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's like laptops, there's the thing.
Any other comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 11, 2012 from Business Administrator requesting to amend the resolution dated September 25, 2012, awarding a contract to Rico USA Inc. for the leasing of new photocopiers, specifically to include in the language "and replacement photocopiers" and for the payment of existing leased photocopiers, and to add State Contract Number 82709.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 15, 2012 from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Continental Fire and Safety Inc., Trenton, New Jersey, for the purchase of one oxygen containment fill station cascade system in the amount of $63,948.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 15, 2012 from Business Administrator requesting authorization to establish a salary committee to review the salaries of nonrepresented employees of the City of Elizabeth. Members will include Councilman Frank Questa, Councilman Paulina Sedano, Councilman William Baumann Jr., Bridgette S. Zellner, Business Administrator, William Reyes, Director of Planning and Community Development, and Athany M. Zingaro, Chief Financial Officer.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated September 10, 2012 from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for tax collector cancel refund credit, the overbilling of taxes for 2011 tax year on the property located at 10519 First Street in the total sum of $15,489.4.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 10, 2012 from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization to foreclose on properties listed on the attached tax bill for closure list as provided from the In-Rem Foreclosure Act.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 16, 2012 from Chief Financial Officer advising that temporary emergency appropriations for the 2013 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budget may be asked as well.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 16, 2012 from Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body consider the introduction of amendments to the 2013 state fiscal year budget and schedule a public hearing to be held November 13, 2012.
Any comments? Put it on.
[INAUDIBLE].
Letter dated October 16, 2012 from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for his honor, the mayor, to renew a tax rebate in agreement with assigned owner, CIS Oakwood LLC of Oakwood Plaza, the Parker Road parcel, for the length of the new housing and mortgage finance agency loan.
Any comments? This is very important because this is actually needed in order for them to move on and do the rehabilitation that they want to do at the 350 and 380 Irvington Avenue, so this is a very important piece. Any other comments?
I just encourage you, Mr. President, that, um, hoping that this works out fine for this development so that we can ease the pain for those residents that's in the area.
Absolutely.
So that they can live peacefully and somewhat in the natural way.
Okay, thank you. Okay, put it on.
Letter dated October 16, 2012 from Chief Financial Officer requesting to amend Bond Ordinance Number 4282, which authorized the installation of synthetic turf field at O'Brien Field in the amount of $2.2 million, specifically to increase the amount of the bonds by $1.4 million, raising the bond ordinance to $3,420,000 with a down payment of $180,000.
O'Brien Field? Is that it?
Yeah, I guess it's the sad news. Uh, Mr. President, on about 5 o'clock, I received a phone call by Mr. Bavari, and I just brought me up to the attention that tonight, Mr. Zingaro was going to recommend an additional $1.4 million, which in the letter itself is plenatory. There's a lot of things to be done on O'Brien Field, especially a removal of contaminating soil, which is over $600,000, you know, and all the additional language that he put through Mr. Zingaro. Uh, this work needs to be done. Uh, you know, I'm really not too satisfied, but still I didn't get a copy of what it looks like. The, uh, we actually allocated $279,000 for an architect, and I didn't see a single drawing of what is actually recommended, what this area is going to be look like. Again, I am not against the progress of the city. I'm always in favor of anything that is pertaining to progress, but it's good to know more in advance what's happening and how we're spending our money. I don't want this to end up like another First Ward soccer field that will be $8 million, and then we get people coming to speak against soccer field that everything has to be for pro football or pro whatever. You know, soccer players are also entitled to have their games and sport, but I really like to know what happened to the money that we paid on it to the architect to come out with drawing, and it's been almost a year now. And, you know, I got, like I said, I'm not against the progress, and especially this is my area, and I'd like to see the old fence remaining, you know, the old, uh, solid fence that we have. That should be remaining because the new ones will last four years, and then we have to spend an additional $3 million.
Restoration, the board on.
Okay, and for structure restoration, okay, that'll be good, because you're never going to find this kind of, you know, fence that we have right now. It's nice clean up, might be send blasting or whatever, and then new painting, because I saw some of the replacement that was done. Uh, even my grandson could go to the fence, go like this, and it come down. It's actual alloy, you know, iron, which any kids could actually bend, give him a good kick, and it goes down, one, two, three, so this is good. But if you don't mind to have that information, it would be nice for Mr. Bavari to like to sit down.
Tonight or?
Well, I, you know, I was in a hurry to attend another meeting, and I had to go to Newark, so there were a lot of things, but I'm, but my agenda, I mean, if there is any other.
Mr. President, I just want to just, if we can also get a copy of that, if there's been any renderings done?
All right.
I agree, Councilman, if we spent that kind of money, we should at least get a rendering of what it's going to look like. Have you seen anything?
No.
But I can, I can tell you this. I know that, from my experience, um, dealing with a lot of these developments over the years, the problem you have with Elizabeth and a lot of these older cities is that what's underneath the grass is not to the same standard of modern day. It might have been back in 1950 and 1940, but today, the EPA's got such strict standards that anytime you touch the ground, you gotta clean it all out for grain of dirt, and it's a whole process. I know it gets very expensive.
When I was a kid, that field, it was strictly dirt, and they used to cover it with oil. Just use that oil to drain it to keep the dust down.
Wow. That was a lot back then. That was acceptable back then. Not now.
That's good.
Okay, put it on.
Thank you, Mr. President. One other one for the sixth.
Letter dated October 12, 2012 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute agreements with nonprofit agencies as listed on the attached schedule to allocate CD number 38 fiscal year 2012 emergency solutions grant funding in the amount of $164,633.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 12, 2012 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to postpone the city's mortgage on the property located at 1464-1465 Lexington Place for a total amount of $440,706.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 15, 2012 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to discharge the city's mortgage senior disabled owner occupied program on the property located at 6365 Erie Street in the amount of $10,650.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 15, 2012 from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to provide an owner occupied basic program deferred payment loan for the property located at 516-518 Riverside Drive in an amount not to exceed $19,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 12, 2012 from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Magic Touch Construction Company, Inc., Keyport, New Jersey, for the repairs and maintenance of the plumbing systems at various public buildings owned by the city for a two-year period in an amount not to exceed $609,420.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 11, 2012 from the Director of Public Works requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A, attached here too, and made apart here of for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of $8,940.74.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 12, 2012 from the Director of Public Works requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A, attached, uh, for the boarding up of said properties in the amount of $2,751.90.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 15, 2012 from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald, Millburn, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering design services on a reimbursable basis for time and expenses in connection with the Park Avenue sewer flow metering at an estimated course of $6,500.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 15, 2012 from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald, Millburn, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering design services in connection with the renovation of combine sewer overflow point 002 at a cost not to exceed $35,000.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 2, 2012 from the Police Director requesting permission to establish handicap parking spaces and for deletions. First Ward, 402 First Avenue.
Put it on.
Fifth Ward, 564 Jefferson Avenue.
Yeah.
First Ward, 90R Marshall Street.
The next three you could hold.
Hold each? Okay, thanks. Sixth Ward, 313 High Street. I'll come back to that one. Fourth Ward, 550 Walnut Street.
I'll put it on.
Fifth Ward, 647 South Park Street.
Oh.
Third Ward, 351 Jersey Avenue.
I'll put it on.
Fourth Ward, 364 Cherry Street.
I'll hold.
First Ward, 120 South Park Street.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Hold that, please.
Sixth, wow, okay, okay. Fifth Ward, 1012 North Avenue.
Oh.
Second Ward, 978 Grove Street.
Put it on.
First Ward, 150 South Park.
Hold that.
Third Ward, 985 Ed Wood Road.
Yeah.
Okay, deletions, 727 Fambieran Avenue, 1020 60 Grand Street, 28 Caverin, 955 Williams Street, 119 Inslee Place, 717 Clarkson Avenue, 268 South Elmore Avenue. Put it on. Councilman Mazza, there are two handicaps. 313 High Street.
Put on old.
And 436 Nile Street.
Put on old. Madam, while I'm having the fourth, if you don't mind, I would like to put on a, an handicap that was requested on April the 30th. Apparently, the police department disapproved for Jesus Almora, 641 First Avenue, but he put it on notation, sign will have to be placed in front of 639 First Avenue. What happened, the gentleman lives on the second floor of 641 First Avenue.
Okay.
Uh, the gentleman that lives, or the family that lives on the first floor already has an handicap in front of 641. The gentleman that rents the second floor, he's handicapped, and it's actually, he's got very serious asthma problem or whatever, and he called me, and I, uh, I went to see this gentleman. Matter of fact, yesterday, I happened to call, uh, the city clerk's office to find out if anything came up, and, uh, the city clerk had no record, so I directed the secretary to get in touch with the traffic, and the traffic had no record, and then I had a conversation with the, uh, the police in charge, and he felt that I should go through him, and he would have no problem, so I went through him, spoke on the phone, he had no record. But the reason he had no record, and the city has no record, is because he disapproved with a notation, tell the guy, it's up to City Council. Uh, speaking to him, he says, well, if you want, we could place ne- next door. Next door is a six-family, uh, a six-family home, which has a driveway with a garage and everything else. The, the, one of the landlord just passed away a couple of months ago, the wife lives out of town. Uh, you know, I have no problem to give anybody that is handicapped an opportunity to have a parking space, and matter of fact, this gentleman, as well, more is going back to Cuba, his, his father's in bed shape, and he has to go for, you know, to see, might be for the last time, that one of his family member, and I told him, I said, I will do the investigation, and then by the time he's back from Cuba, probably gonna go through one or two, three readings, and you probably gonna have an handicap space. Whether we put a 639 First Avenue as the police, the recommender, or we could put across the street, uh, on First Avenue also, there is another fourth family, and then we have the Kirk Center. We cannot put him in front of Kirk Center, but right next to this particular 641, there's another handicap that belonged to one of my committee person, and then right after belongs, there's another handicap, so on First Avenue, we have a sequence of handicap signs, and the criteria says that you cannot deny an handicap an opportunity to have his handicap space, so I, for one, as the board council, recommend that we place in front of 639, uh, you know, and we'll take care of this handicap person.
Madam clerk, I'm sorry, um, I was looking through the, I'm sorry, Mr. President, number three on the list. Like this?
Number three?
You can put that one on. I'm just reading through the information. She's completely, uh, quadriplegic, so.
Okay. This is okay.
Completely non-ambulatory.
Okay. It was brought to my attention that, um, there was a request for a handicap in the fifth ward for Ms. Cynthia Mallard at 564 Jefferson Avenue. Uh, it was put through as a regular handicap and should have been personalized, so, yeah, a call, um, the sign shop called, and there was a change where it should have been personalized because she paid for it, personalized, and, um, a regular was put through, okay? So we have to change.
Change it.
Yeah, she paid.
Okay.
Letter dated October 2, 2012 from Mr. Michael D. Weaver, Manager, Atlantic Environmental Consulting Services, Warren, New Jersey, is requesting an encroachment permit to install one temporary soil boring in the sidewalk in front of the property located at 508 Broadway.
Any comments? Put it on.
Letter dated October 4, 2012 from Ms. Michelle Nelson of HWP Elizabeth is requesting an encroachment permit to install a solar-powered mobile device charging kiosk, and it's called The Juice on Broad Street near the bus shelter located in front of 90 Broad Street.
Can I put this on old, please, until I review?
Okay.
Thank you.
The Juice. No one, the Juice.
The Juice. Okay, I like the other one.
Yes, yes. Councilman Grover would like a commendation for Mr. Sean McLean for being recognized by the United Youth Council. I have a memorial from Councilman Sedano for Lieutenant William Lindsay.
Hey, I'm sorry.
You sent an invitation.
We're gonna need that.
When?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Sorry.
Okay.
I've been asking for a week, and only came in yesterday.
Any dessert. Sean was my student.
Okay.
Good guy.
Yeah.
You sent me an in- that invitation for Salam Ishmael, but I couldn't print the, um...
I got it right here.
The attachment.
I got it.
Okay, I kept getting an error.
That's why I sent it, so you have the, um, we'll make copies.
Okay. But Mr. Salam Ishmael, founder of the National United Youth Council, Inc., will celebrate 30 years of service Thursday, October 18, 2012, at 6:00 PM at the Polish Home Banquet Center, uh, 625 Peloska Street, Elizabeth. Okay?
I accept it, I'm not gonna...
Try an email, everybody.
I could just be...
October 18. Thursday.
I thought it was tomorrow, I'm sorry, I need it for Thursday.
Thursday.
It's an extra day.
Hmm. On Thursday. Okay.
547, I'll just say.
Okay, just, I just, here we go. Just want you to note that you have the materials for the ABC, upcoming ABC meeting. The meeting has been changed to the 23rd at 7:00. We only have two items, two license renewals that they receive tax clearance for, that's it. So rather than have everybody come in on Monday and then again on Tuesday, we can handle it at 7:00 on Tuesday, okay? And then we'll have our regular meeting at 7:30.
I didn't, um, that was, oh, let's be downstairs.
So the ABC... What time, 7? 7:00, yes, next Tuesday.
It's 7:00 PM on the 23rd.
So two items only, so.
Monday is being voted, right?
Correct, yes. All right, hopefully that's okay with everybody.
Very good.
And then I had just one other item that I did not put, I removed it from the, uh, voting agenda last, um, week, which was the license transfers exceptions that we talked about. Held it because Councilwoman, uh, asked that we look at the ordinance to see if there was a two-year limit on somebody who was, uh, approved the license transfer and needed to wait an additional two years before coming back. Uh, Rocco researched it, the ABC secretary, I looked through the ordinance as well, and there's nothing that, uh, requires that a person wait in the two years before requesting a, uh, another transfer of a license. In speaking with the ABC council, um, he has indicated that we should have something that has been a problem, uh, in order to do that, uh, if you're gonna re-say two years, why not one year, why not five years? Uh, so that's where we're at right that. So I wanted to see what was the pleasure of this body with regard to, um, putting that in the ordinance, uh, to require that they not be allowed to move the license for two years after it has been, it has been approved.
Frank. Wasn't that, wasn't that...
I remember, yes, it was. Used to be a minimum of two years before you come over again.
The only thing that exists presently is anybody who has requested a place-to-place or person-to-person transfer, and it has been denied, they have to wait a year if the circumstances remain the same to make another request. That's the only thing that there is in the ordinance presently.
Mr. President, what will be...
Councilman Keenan.
What will be the purpose of requiring a two-year waiting period?
At the time, it used to be that if you move your license within 1,500 feet, and they wanna move, let's say, from, um, all the way by Singer, and they wanna come to a motor section, you know, everybody would be doing that, you have to give at least a stability to function, and then see what happened, then move it again after two years, otherwise...
But now we're eliminating that.
Right, that's what I'm saying, now we're eliminating.
We're eliminating the 1,500. We still want to keep the stipulation at the two years.
Once they move, yes, I think it would be nice to have at least...
Sort of be some type of stability in the whole process. You don't want people jumping every six months, a license here, then a license there, and a license here.
Well, the one thing that, um...
And then if it becomes, you begin to flip the license, just like you flip homes when you buy them, you sell them, you flip them before, before the ink dry on, on the contract, and then you create a problem.
Once again, the ABC, um...
So it was there because you remember.
Attorney.
Yeah, well, it's not there now. Maybe it was at one point, but it certainly isn't there now.
Well, I have all records, I could just, at that time, I'll dig it up.
No, no, I can understand you have all records, but in terms of it being in the ordinance presently, it doesn't exist.
We can put it, we can put it back in.
Um, yeah, well, but, but what the ABC attorney was saying is that if that person wants this request of the transfer, they would have to come before the ABC board anyhow to request it, this body could then make that decision.
Yeah, but we don't even want to entertain it because it's, it does, it's not...
And then, and then the other thing in talking with, with business owners, you know, they don't make those decisions lightly. When they make those decisions, I mean, a lot of times, they're, they are investing time and money, they're doing construction, you know, to these facilities, so they make a decision to do that, they're making a commitment to be there for a while. Now, if it becomes a hardship, they come before the ABC, and we can determine whether it's a hardship or not.
Mr. President, just like we had before the Board of Adjustment, once your application is denied, you can't come back until after two years.
That's the same thing here.
Same thing that's over here.
But this is, we're asking for the same thing.
No, 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 that's different.
It's not a different thing.
What, we're, yeah.
Okay. Mr. President, correct, correct if I'm wrong, but in our ordinance of the ABC now...
Right.
If you get denied on a transfer, you cannot come back for a year.
That's correct.
So that's already in there.
That's already in there.
But we're not, we're not talking about...
But that's what he's talking about.
No, he's just giving you an example.
But that is the example that he gave, and that's the exact same example.
Could we have the, uh, our council explain it maybe a little?
What the council president is referring to is, um, uh, transferring of licenses. Um, I guess the, the, the two-year provision was to prevent people from, I guess, taking the 1,500 feet and extending it to 3,000 feet, um, with one jump, um, and doing some research and talking to Rocco, um, we thought that wasn't necessary because to, to get the 3,000 feet, they would have to come to council twice, and if council wanted to, you know, not grant it for two years, they could decline it the second time that the person came back. And that's why it's not in the ordinance.
I understand it, but why even entertain the possibility of having that happen? Why entertain the possibility of having the liquor license owner come up before us? Why entertain it when we can just put it in the ordinance that it would not be entertained unless there is a true hardship? But, but by the mere fact that it, you don't want to work out, it's not working out, or whatever reasons they do to do these things, why...
reasons they do, to do these things, why entertain it? This is what I'm saying to you. And we can put it in the ordinance, and then it'd be fine, we don't have to entertain it.
Can I just, before we, I appreciate what you're saying, but I'd like to know if the law department, are we now infringing on somebody's ability to do business? I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking. Is there such a, is there such a, if that's, if that ordinance is passed that way, is it now affecting the ability to do business?
There are similar ordinances in a number of other towns, and there's a number of cases, about four cases, and they're all, they all seem to be fact-specific. And it really depends on the length of the transfer in feet and the years. Some have been upheld and others have been reversed. So it's pretty, it's pretty unclear.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think we're infringing on anyone's ability to do business. What we do is that we regulate how they do business in terms of they don't, do not exploit the possibility of overturning or moving licenses every six months, every three months, and pocketing licenses, and putting licenses under other people's name, and using dummy preparations. You're trying to create an atmosphere where all those biases do not take place. So you just put a two-year stipulation. If it's such an investment, why are we harping over this issue?
Why not do it a year?
We can just put it in, we can just put it in, unless you know what...
Would you agree on a year?
No, I think two years is appropriate. I mean, one year, that's, that's, they come before us every year to get the license renewed. So what's wrong with the two years? And it's been in the ordinance. I can probably, I can probably go back and find paperwork too, if I didn't get my paperwork from 17 years back from the ABC. Many was in there. Frank, would you please?
I don't, I don't recall.
I mean, 'cause you haven't been on as long. I've been on 20 years, he's been on twice around.
Only two years less than yours.
I know, but you still haven't.
Still, it has to be something in agreement, I mean...
But if you're gonna do that, then you gotta have a provision for hardship situations. What if a guy buys a liquor license, puts it in a building, the building catches fire? Now what? You're telling him he can't move?
And that's a hardship.
Well, but you have to have that. You have to have that in there.
We should, there should be a provision for hardship. We don't know, because we don't even have to...
Then we encourage people to put a fire to a building. No way.
Harshness already there.
It's up to city council. I remember there was a bar on Broad Street that caught on fire, whatever name it was.
Yeah, but you're not gonna say what I'm saying. If we're gonna say, if we're gonna put this in to tell people, "You can't come here at all," then you're not allowing a person to come and present their case.
But there's a hardship, and...
That's my point. Then you have to, you have to be able to have a provision.
There should be a provision in the...
That's an exception.
And it is an exception.
Not a two-year.
We don't have the ordinance, so we don't know.
That's my point. There's nothing in there that says, "Two years, you can't move your license," except for ABC. Indeed, that doesn't exist right now. So if you're gonna put a two-year limitation, you gotta also put the language of the hardship in.
Of course, but we don't have the ordinance in front of us. So we don't need to be broken.
Can we do that, Mr. Warrior?
We're trying to vote on something that we haven't even been presented before us. Like, what's the rush?
The ordinance remained the same, it's only that one piece that's missing.
We don't, no, I wanna see the whole ordinance. I want to see...
So can we redraft it?
It doesn't have to be redrafted, it just needs that one piece, we either include it or we don't. And I think we should need to take a vote. If you wanna include it, we'll take a vote aye. If not, no, and we'll move it forward.
Could, could we, Mr. President, like, get copies of the other cities? You know, just to see what they're, the language that they have.
I can forward that to the ABC attorney.
But again, he's indicating there is not clear, one way or the other, that. And that was the ABC attorney's concern, is if that's the challenge, that can be challenged. Councilman Keenan?
Yeah. One concern I have is that we're not fortune tellers, we don't know what kind of exigent business circumstances could come up in two years. Even if you have a list of hardships, it may not cover every conceivable situation that would come up. So to be more supportive of not people who would one, refuse the transfer, but to be supportive of the business community, the licensed owners, I would be inclined not to have the two-year language, but know that when they come up for this transfer, if we think that it's not appropriate, just deny it.
I, 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 I'm just...
Councilman Grover?
I agree to, I have no problem putting the two years, as long as the applicant who might fall in that two-year has an opportunity to come before us and explain their situation. That's my only concern. Because there might be a situation where we as a body might agree to give them that. That's, that's the only thing that I would suggest.
Thank you.
Well, there should be a hardship clause, but again, if you don't have the legislation in front of us, if they say you're only changing just one item, but also in that ordinance, it also states issues regarding a hardship. So that should be encompassed in it. I mean...
It is, it is part of it. The other exceptions have not been changed.
Right, but if that hardship section of the ordinance doesn't talk about the two years?
It doesn't, no, it just indicates hardship, that's all. And then we determine whether it's a hardship or not.
So then that gives them the ability to come up?
Right.
If it's, if two-year time has not lasted.
Like I said, as long as that is, is clear.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
As a hardship, hardship is in there.
So hardship, if it's one month, it can literally be, buy a license and go to an establishment, the place burned down, that's one month, like, you come before the board.
Right, absolutely.
Mr. President, right now, I'm a little bit confused eventually. Can you, again, somebody here, try to explain to me, how do we arrive to change to 1,500 feet, let's say? Which I did like the idea, but how long is the period that we allow those people to move throughout the city from R1, R2, R3, C?
Forever.
Forever?
That becomes a new law.
That becomes a new law, then they could just move around. But don't you think, once they move, they should stay for a certain period?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
I know, that's what I'm saying. But I wanna try to understand what I'm voting on, you know?
So the, the, the point, that's you.
I was trying to move...
That's the issue.
Right, so that's the issue.
That's the issue.
Okay. I'm in favor of moving certain bars. Get away from Elizabeth Island, send them down the industrial area. Get them away from Broad Street, but bring some nightclubs into Broad Street. There is nobody that you disturb on Broad Street, except the tombstones and the old people, rest in peace, with all due respect to them. But in my neighborhood, I definitely don't want bars that happen to be a neighborhood bar. And right now, we might have a Go-Go Girls performing without permission, or we might have loud music to whatever, or we might have, you know, all those extra activities, no matter what you tell, even to the media, or to, you call the office or whatever area, guess what? If the guy made a donation to John Doe, he's not gonna be bothered, let's be realistic about it, okay? So now, we wanna change. Move this gap, but we have to have a period of time to allow them not to move it again.
Yeah, it's the two-year, that's what we're...
No, two, he said, we had on the book, I mean, I remember, years ago, when I first became on board.
That's fine, but again, all I'm saying is it's not there now, and I'm just sharing with you...
Might be the attorney didn't do proper research, Mr. President. Better searching it.
Well, I looked through the ordinance myself.
I understand.
After they said that, I looked, because I wanted to be sure and clear what I was talking about. And it's not there.
But it's not there, then we have to put it in, Mr. President.
It's not there.
Well, that's what I wanna get at. If we want to include it, fine, then we'll ask the attorney to include it, and we'll move forward. If that's the consensus.
Can I move this along? Because my motion is that we include the two years, as long as the hardship concept is, goes into that, that two-years also. That's all I'm gonna have to say.
Okay.
Okay? I'll make that motion.
I agree with Councilman Grover, yeah.
Okay, is everybody else okay with that?
Yeah, let me understand correctly. You're trying to say that you can only move if there is an hardship case?
Correct.
And if I don't have an hardship, and I wait two years, I can't come up?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah. After two years, you can.
Okay, no problem.
You still can come up after two years, right?
I wanna be clear, because that would be on tip, I'm gonna save that tape. Because I know what happens sometime. Now, what do you know, who do you know?
Councilman Sedano?
I just wanna add, like, I know that we, we're free to go past the 1,500 feet, and I just agree with Councilwoman. It's a level of accountability, just to keep order, and as long as the clause is there that there's a hardship, they can come forward, you know, we're not hurting anyone. But I just think order, you know, just accountability, just to make sure that things are established. I agree with you.
Okay. Councilman, would you repeat that again, please, once more, so everybody's clear?
Amendment to the ordinance...
Counselor, you should get paid overtime.
No, no. That hat is not on today. The amendment to the ordinance that was presented to us would include, would include a limitation of transfer of two years, except people could move their license within two, within those two years if they present one of the delineated hardships that we have related.
And we already have the hardships.
Yeah, and it's in there, right, right. Because hardship is one of them, the airport and the...
There's a bunch of things.
Katkowsky redevelopment.
Right.
Okay. That's the, that's the motion, and Councilwoman Perkins seconded it.
Seconded, okay. We'll take a roll call on that.
Okay. Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Yes.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedano.
Aye.
Councilman Gorman.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Okay, wait, can you, Councilman...
Go to work.
To Rocco. And we'll have something ready for... I believe that you guys just voted to do it as is.
No, we didn't.
No, no.
Just go on the amendment.
Amendment.
I understand that, but the consensus that you just reached was exactly...
We need to see...
We still need to see the ordinance.
It was presented two weeks ago.
No, it wasn't, it was not the way we talked, not the way we amended it tonight.
Not with the two years in it, it doesn't have it.
That language hasn't...
Or at least, we haven't seen it.
We can agree to disagree.
Can you just, okay, you have...
Can you prepare it?
I don't have it, Rocco has it. He's the ABC...
We'll prepare it with everything in.
And the one that we had for last week to vote on, that two-year, was not in there.
It was not in there.
It was not in there.
We have to amend it.
Now, he may have, he said he was gonna prepare something else to include that, but we got neither one tonight, so.
So we need to see.
While we're working on ordinances, what's going on with the loitering ordinance to put some teeth in it for loitering at the, at the darkened parks, to give our police personnel?
Uh, I believe that, talked to, I believe I talked to Councilman Grover about that.
Yeah, we have to modify that ordinance.
Yeah. We have that, it's ready to go.
Okay. Can you, can we, can we vote on it? Is it ready to be voted on?
Uh, I mean, I don't have it with me.
Would you be able to get it to us before next week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it hasn't, well, actually, we need to circulate it first.
This is the one about, is this the one about littering, or is this the one about park closure?
Park closure.
There already is an ordinance on park closure. There are two ordinances on park closure.
Can you, can you, any instant police?
No, 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 no. George, you're incorrect. The ordinance on park closure does not say that we have to kick them out. It doesn't say it in there. It's not in there.
No, well, no, no, but is, is the question that I was, I was asked, I believe, two weeks ago or four weeks ago, about whether or not there was an ordinance about park closure, and there are two.
And, yeah, but none of them, none of those ordinances talk about the police having the authority, should we move people from the park after...
No, but yeah, but that wasn't, that wasn't the issue that I was asked to...
Well, we're asking...
Okay. That's, that's a different question.
We need to add that in there, and then the ordinance be presented, or amendment to the ordinance be presented.
Okay. Well, we're about in there. They're just...
It's not in there.
Okay, we can, yes.
I thought it was, but it's not.
But that's why, that's why the police said they could never arrest people.
Yeah.
They can get a sentence for violation of the ordinance, so long as there's a...
No enforcement in there.
No, no.
There's no language in there that tells the police...
We'll put that on.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
I would point out again, that in echoing what some of my colleagues have said, that the problem is one of enforcement. At the Green Echo Park in Elmore, they closed the gate, and what happens is, people come with wire cutters and cut the gate open, and they're hanging out there all night. So in addition to the ordinance, we really need to step up the enforcement, we really need to...
There's nothing in the ordinance that puts enforcement...
Like in Neveson Park, there is no gate. So the people, you know, so they're there, and the cops just look at them, because I think there is no, nothing in the ordinance that says, "I can give you ticket, or arrest you, or move you along," or whatever. It needs to be said, it's for enforcement.
But there's an issue with closing, physically closing the parks, because the parks are a throughway for which people traverse. And the Department of Public Works had issues with closing parks.